Mr. Trump, you have the invocation and Mr. Trampy with the pleasure of leading us.
Ladies and gentlemen, Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to live in America and where we have our freedoms and allowing us to gather today and to do, provide a democratic democracy and following, oh boy, I'm messing this up. I apologize. Lord, please be with us tonight. Guide us in our decisions and make the best of our community. Be with our citizens and the public safety, military. Guide them, protect them, oversee them. Let us do your will in your name and your glory, we pray. Amen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item is approval of your consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of 11 items as follows. Approval of the board meeting minutes from September 13th, 2016. Approval of the FY 2018 budget calendar. Resolution in support of the FY 2018 VDOT revenue sharing application to be submitted for the county. It's seeking $975,000 in state funds and that comes with 100% local match. Number four is approval of contract renewals to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for medical, dental, vision, and EAP insurance services. Fifth is approval of a contract to Mary Washington Healthcare Physicians for medical services. These relate to pre-employment physicals and screenings and the like, and these are conducted at the Mary Washington Health Center in the county. Item six is approval of contract to CDI Infrastructure LLC for public safety consulting services with budgeted funds in four separate phases for a total of $310,240. Number seven is approval of a contract with Vanderpool Frostik and Neshinian PC for legal services for the Department of Social Services Administration and the delivery of public assistance programs and welfare activities. Item eight is approval of a deed of easement for the Levels Road Water Tank. There's a revised deed of easement to allow the county to enter into a license agreement with other service providers. Item nine is a proclamation by the board recognizing Red Ribbon Week and the Young Marines Program from October 23rd to October 31st this year. And number 10 is resolution in support of the VRE Smart Scale application. The VRE seeks smart scale funding for the VRE Fredericksburg Line Capacity Expansion Project. This has nothing to do with the Eastern Bypass Project, which is a completely separate matter being taken up by the state. Item 11 is a Verizon Colocation License Agreement approval for Levels Road Water Tank. This will generate $34,500 in fees to the county for Verizon colocations on our tank, and that is your consent agenda.
Do any board members wish to pull any items?
Number 10, please.
One question, are we going to, there's the proclamation for the red ribbon, is there anybody here for that?
Is Stan Kennedy here or anyone else from the Young Marines?
Do we want to read that?
Apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we pull number nine as well and then we'll just read it?
Absolutely.
And then go on for that. Do we have motion on the remainder?
Yes, sir.
Okay, call the question.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item nine is a proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week and the Young Marines Program. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Young Marines Program in the local region is a drug demand reduction program sponsored by the Marine Corps League with membership for children ages eight to 18 or through completion of high school, currently having 21 of 30 total Young Marines from Spotsylvania County participating and comprising 70% of the unit. And whereas the Young Marines Program is modeled after Marine Corps' values of honor, courage, and commitment by focusing on teaching youth to live drug-free lifestyles and teaching ideals such as leadership, teamwork, and discipline. And whereas the local branch of the Young Marines is named after Lance Corporal Caleb John Powers, a Marine from Fredericksburg who participated in the program and who was killed in action in Iraq. And whereas the Lance Corporal Caleb John Powers Young Marines participate in and promote the National Red Ribbon Campaign. And whereas each year, the Young Marines sponsor a National Red Ribbon Week, giving individuals the opportunity to wear a red ribbon signifying opposition to illegal drug use. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign is being celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to 31st, with this year's theme being "Closing the Gate on Drugs." And whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitments to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Spotsylvania Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the week of October 23rd to 31st, 2016, as Red Ribbon Week and commends the Lance Corporal Caleb John Powers Young Marines for their commitments to live drug-free lives and for their participation in Red Ribbon Week.
Do we have motion?
No motion.
Okay, call the question.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 11, the reason I ask it to be pulled because I think there's some things here that are specific to Spotsylvania County. We have a representative from VRE and I'd like him to come up and sort of give us a quick view of what this HB2 or Smart, excuse me, Smart Scale, I think this portion of it is Atlantic Gateway that we got portion of the money.
Mr. Skinner, real quick, I'm clarifying, that's number 10, correct?
Did I say 11?
Yeah, number 10, okay.
I apologize, number 10, excuse me. If you would, just, I think it's important that the, I mean, we understand, we see it, but then there's citizens out there that need to know like crossroads stations, stuff of that nature, maintenance and stuff of that nature that we're doing, all right? So if you could give a brief summary of what this is about to our citizens, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, thank you. My name is Tom Hickey, I'm the Chief Development Officer at the Virginia Railway Express. The VRE Fredericksburg Line Capacity Expansion is to fund a series of projects, to complete the funding for a series of projects that affect, that are required by CSX in order for us to open Potomac Shore Station, which will give us another station and more ridership, as well as to provide the ability to add longer, more cars to our Fredericksburg Line trains so we can operate with more seats. There are 10 projects involved with this project. Eight of them are regarding stations and they are either second platforms at stations so we can use more tracks right now. Where at almost every station we have on the Fredericksburg Line, we have one platform and we are confined to one track. CSX would like the flexibility to move us to whichever side of the railroad happens to be available at the time. So from that standpoint, that's eight projects. A ninth project is the expansion of the crossroads facilities. This is our southern maintenance base, running longer trains. We need longer tracks to store those trains and that, the funding here would provide for those expansions. And the 10th project is rolling sockets, buying 11 new coaches, which would be devoted to this line and effectively is, can't do the math off the top of my head, but it's 11 cars times 155 more seats in rush hour service. So that's all of which is providing capacity. These improvements are only benefiting VRE. They have nothing to do, as was earlier mentioned, with the high-speed rail projects the state is involving. The funding for the projects, right now we have 62% of the funding for these projects in hand. Excuse me, four of these projects are 100% funded already, but as part of the math for Smart Scales, we're taking credit for those as part of the benefits of this project. Two of the projects are unfunded, that's the Leland Road Funding Expansion and the Expansion of the Crossroads Maintenance Facility. So those two tracks, projects which directly benefit Spotsylvania riders are zero-funded. We're using this funding to move them several years in advance of our capital program to get them implemented all at once, so we get those benefits.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
So one has been brought up to me once before. So when are we going to rename the line, the Spotsylvania Line?
We're happy to take that under advisement.
I think that would be good. Isn't it customary, the last station on the line is the name of the line?
That is an approach.
So maybe you could get back with us on that one?
I'd be happy.
When it's renamed. Thank you. In the comments? Call the question.
Motion to approve.
All right, call the question.
Six, yes, with Mr. Benton voting no.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Chair, if we could, without objection, move the Chancellor of Real Crossing proffer agenda item up because I see we have school members out here and I'd like to, I value their time, I'd like to get them back to home.
Any objection? Okay.
We'll move ahead then to discussion of the vote on R16002 Chancellor's Hill Crossing LLC proffer amendment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the last hearing, you had tabled this matter to seek some additional information and I believe you received information from VDOT and also from fire services. And tonight, Dr. Wright from the schools is here, I'm going to ask us to speak with him. And so I won't go through another presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any further meaning.
There was also accident information sent around by the sheriff and other correspondents via email that was distributed to the board.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Ross?
I'd like Dr. Wright, I know he's come out tonight to talk about this, so I think we should hear from him. So at our last meeting, at the very end, we were talking about the road improvements and I know that you've talked with both Tim and myself, been out on-site for dismissals and arrivals in the morning. It got brought up that there were some concerns, especially about the right out, if we open up a new, the old Spotswood Furnace Road, so a right out on Route 3, about student drivers coming and having to merge very quickly. A couple of things that I've seen is from VDOT kind of assuring us, they are the traffic experts, they know traffic better than we do, saying this will be something that will help the intersection as a whole. I also, when I was talking with Sean Nelson, he brought up that for a student driver to actually do the right out from where the student parking is would be quite a feat to kind of, it'd be harder for them to get back there than just doing the right out on Spotswood Furnace Road.
Yeah, I spoke to our school resource officer and a tentative plan if this was to go through would be that the right in in the morning would be only for buses, westbound buses and parent drop-off. Students would still, their entrance is actually further down, so they would access the parking lot via the Spotswood Furnace and Route 3, the typical, the current interchange. And the same would be for exiting. They would exit their normal way and then they would go to the light, Spotswood Furnace Road and Route 3. And then the exit in the afternoon, tentatively, would be for, again, for our buses that were heading west, westbound buses, and then possibly our parent pickup as well, once the buses had gone through.
And you have the ability with your school resource officer to direct traffic to ensure that students wouldn't be trying to do those things, out of the school parking lot anyway, correct?
Well, mostly within our parking lot, we can cone off and chain off sections, which we've already done. Some of the suggestions that were previously made by VDOT, we sort of limited some of the lanes and worked with them. So we would do that so that there would be one-way in. If you came in one way, you would go out that way, and if you came in via Spotswood Lane, you would go out that way as well.
And Dr. Wright, is this something that you want and do you have any kind of safety concerns at all about doing it?
It would be hard to predict. I mean, I think you've been privy to, I know several of the complaints for eight years have been, in my eighth year now, it's at Riverbend, and we've had a steady flow of complaints about traffic congestion, major inconveniences, drop-off in the morning. We've had safety concerns with, and several situations, we've had our fair share of accidents as well on the Route 3 Spotswood Furnace because of just a heavy volume. So in my opinion, again, I'm not a road expert, but in my opinion, I think anything we could do to reduce the volume at the Spotswood Furnace and Route 3 intersection would be helpful. Again, that was a recommendation that was made by VDOT. I was working with them probably in my second or third year, they came out and looked at the timing of the lights, looked at our traffic patterns, made several suggestions, and that was one that we couldn't do, did not have the means to do that, but you know, I think since they did make the recommendation and we still have congestion, I would certainly be in favor of that.
All right, I can't thank you enough for coming out. I'm not sure if anybody else has any questions for you, but thank you for your time tonight.
Certainly.
We have any questions from the board? Mr. Skinner?
Mr. Wright, at our last meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, the big concern was coming out of that road, okay? Coming out and joining, making it to the left while people are coming in the right, okay? So now I hear that you don't want cars going in right turn there. What is the problem with a student going in? I mean, I can see you having caution on coming out, but why going in? Can you explain that to me?
The proximity to the student parking lot. They would have to come all the way through, if you were, if I had a map of our parking lot.
No, I understand what you're saying.
They would have to come through the faculty parking, all the way through the parent drop-off to get to the student lot, which is easily, more easily accessible from the other entrance by the fieldhouse. So that would be cutting through parent drop-off, cutting through buses, so we'll instruct our students to, that they would just use the normal entrance.
Now, I'm going to ask you this too, and it's just, I'm just thinking about why we've brought up these things, but you're talking about a student that's, you're concerned about coming off the right out, okay? You have a lane there that's going to eventually turn at the intersection there, but yet they want to cross over to the, how does this crossing differ from Route 3? When I'm heading northbound, heading to Route 3, I've got people coming down here and I've got to get in there to school. How do, what differs? I mean, if you're able to do that type of maneuvering with your car on Route 3 at the interchange there, why is it more difficult at the school? Because you got 16, you got 17, you got 18-year-old children who go to the mall every single night, okay? And so my question is, why are we pinpointing this right out to be a bigger problem than what we might have on Route 3?
Well, I didn't make, I didn't say it was a problem, but I just, I'm saying that we would not allow students to go out that way because that's where our buses come from, that's where our parents would come from. So we would direct our students to the other light and the right only off Spotswood Lane, the proposed, would be for buses and for parents, but there would be no need for students to go there because that's not in the close proximity to where they would exit.
So what this new entrance will be for are buses going in in the morning, buses leaving in the afternoon.
And the morning.
And the morning, and teachers?
Teachers, yeah.
Teachers. So we're really going to block off two lanes, or we're going to say this is for teachers and buses, this is for students?
And parents.
And parents, okay. And we're going to be able to enforce that so that teachers also follow the rules too, as far as the students follow that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, if that's the explanation of what that is, because I just couldn't understand when they explained it to me first, as Mr. Benton said, moving out into the left lane is a hazard. Well, it's no different than any other intersection that you're coming out, people are joining the hindway, and you're trying to get in on them. So thank you for that explanation, I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Mr. Benton?
How many buses are going to be coming, sorry, how many buses are going to be coming eastbound in the mornings?
I don't have that information. I know that information was provided from VDOT, but I don't have that number with me.
Because, I mean, and who was the representative for schools last time that was here? Okay, and he pretty much told us, if I'm summing up right, that he didn't really, he didn't really see a problem, but you're saying there is a problem and I just, I mean, it's a controlled intersection where we're at in that right now. So, I mean, you have a traffic signal.
Yes.
So I mean, so what's causing all the issues? I mean, Spotsylvania High School has a backup when they're, all their kids have to come out to the light.
Right.
But they wait in line just like everybody else and they turn when they're green, when they get a green light or when the way is clear, they'll make a right if they can. I mean, there's, they could have the same situation, but I don't hear a whole lot of complaints there.
Okay.
And again, my biggest.
We do have a lot of complaints, so, and I've been dealing with the complaints, so, I mean, it's really your decision. I'm not for it or against it, so I'm for my community. My community would like to see a decrease in the heavy volume of traffic, this was a recommendation that was made, so.
How long does it take for it to clear?
We have traffic from about 7:15 in the morning till about 7:35. Afternoon would be 2:20 till about 2:45.
About 20 minutes?
20 minutes.
Seems like we're going to be, well, I guess from my tone, you can tell I'm not for this. We're spending a lot of money on something I think is going to actually make more of a danger. When you start pulling people out, again, I drive some big trucks and have driven big trucks when I was younger, and even with, and then you incorporate that, even with that out of it, let's say the younger kids, 16 to 18 years old, they don't have the experience. I just think we're, even with, well, let me digress, I'm sorry. If we're going to keep those kids from coming out on the right only in the day, but then you're going to send the larger trucks out with the same issues, you've got screaming kids in the back and disruption, you have to maneuver from, into a turn lane that already has traffic and they can come by.
Sir, I'm a principal, okay, so some of the questions you're asking me are probably for a VDOT representative. They were the ones that came out, they made a recommendation. I'm for what they're for because they said it would help. So I can't stand here and say it's safe or not safe because I didn't go to school to be a.
We can use our common sense. It's not, it's not, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure some of this out.
Well, I'm going to support what VDOT said, so that's, because they're the ones that are, that's their expertise.
Well, VDOT said you only needed 100 feet for turn lane half the time and by the time they built it, we were needing 1,000 feet.
And that's a question for VDOT.
Well, they don't, it's not always that easy. I just have the concern when the people are coming out, whether it's the kids or these loaded buses making that right out, having to maneuver that turn lane initially with all the traffic coming in and around, and then having to maneuver back out into a travel lane, having to pay attention to the light, and then people trying to scoot out, making a right in front of them. I think, I'm telling you, from my experience with law enforcement, it's a disaster waiting to happen. I'm telling you. And now you said, I thought you said you were for this and then now you're saying you're not for it or not against it, so I don't know where you stand. Are you for this or are you against it?
As I say, we're certainly for it because we were told that it would help reduce the congestion and our issues that we've had. So if VDOT says it's not going to do that and they've changed their mind, then we would not be for it.
And I just, I don't, either way, you're going to get clogged up, one way or the other. Your buses are going to get stuck by the light and traffic either stopping for the light, and then they're not going to be able to get out and are going to have to stand and wait while the kids try to get out or vice versa.
If I could have a crystal ball and predict the future, you know, I would say that it's going to work or not going to work. So if it doesn't work, we obviously would.
Well, you're talking about $400,000 plus in work and I don't want to put that down the toilet without some sort of positive result.
And my recommendation would be to have VDOT do a study and get someone who's an expert to come up here and tell you whether it's going to work or whether it's safe, but if you're asking me, I can't tell you that.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
I just wanted to clarify one more time. You never, you never said there was a problem there. And number two was, you said that this would help congestion because then it differentiates between the student traffic lanes and the parents, the teachers, and the buses, correct? That's basically what you've just told me.
That's my opinion.
That's all I need to know.
But that was also the recommendation of VDOT.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ross?
I just wanted to point out, there have been many complaints and in seeing what happens when you're heading out Spotswood Furnace Road, so I know our school bus drivers, they take right turns on red all throughout the county and I have, you know, we never know, an accident could always happen, but it will relieve, if you're going to take a right to head westbound on Route 3, you have to queue up in the right-hand lane, but if you're going to take a left, the school bus is going to take a left there too, they have to queue up in the right-hand lane and that's on Spotswood Furnace. So this would relieve on that intersection, which there have been many accidents, I'm talking about the Spotswood Furnace Road, Route 3 intersection, it would relieve all of the right-hand turning bus traffic at that time. And yes, they'd have to be patient, but it's also around 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, so Route 3 isn't really cooking at that time as much as it is at 5 o'clock. But again, we've got good bus drivers that are going to be doing the merge and for the student driver to get out to this proposed new right-in, right-out, it would be harder for them if they need to take a right to get there, it'd take more time for them to get there, and that's if the resource officer would even let them take a left, come out of their parking lot and then take a left back to this entrance than if they just stayed in the right-hand lane, but it will, on Spotswood Furnace Road, but it will relieve a lot of that. And VDOT says it, like, I was talking with Dr. Wright, neither one of us are traffic experts, but we depend on VDOT to give us the answer and that's what they've told us will help here. I think that's, I had something else, but I forgot what it was.
So I wanted to point a couple of things out. I think one of the benefits we might see is particularly around major events, graduation events where we have the opportunity, right now there's one, really one main entrance into Riverbend for big graduation events and the lines queue up significantly down western Route 3, so potentially opening that entrance during big events, bigger football games and will help the traffic flow in and out during those major events. One of the things, you know, I discussed this with VDOT as well and they had came and said they support the idea as long as it's designed to the VDOT standard trafficability and safety. So, and that goes back to the assumption that when the design is laid out from the applicant, that he's going to meet the VDOT standard and VDOT's going to concur with it. So this really goes back to a legal question, is if we do approve this tonight, is there a, I want to call it a clawback or a retro, you know, we retroactively go back to the original proffer if the applicant cannot meet the VDOT standard? Is that a standard-type agreement or?
Yeah, if they don't comply with the proffer to build the entrance, then it reverts back and they'll have to pay the previous proffers, that's correct.
But it reverts back to, so the applicant's going to agree to design and build to the VDOT standard?
I'm looking at it now just to double-check.
So that's one of the things, I mean, that may be one that we bring the applicant up and just address that real quick. I think, any more questions, Dr. Wright?
Well.
Mr. Benton?
I have a couple more states. We also have a.
Mr. Benton, is that for Mr. Wright or anyone?
No.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the accidents, if you look at that paperwork, I mean, the overwhelming majority are well past or well before or not even during any kind of traffic flow from the schools. So this, I don't, they didn't really do this very well. Also, we have no report from the sheriff's office about any concerns, but we do from the fire department where they have concerns about what's proposed and some of the same issues that we've mentioned here. Like I said, I think we're in for, if this gets approved like it is, I think we're in for some, a lot more issues, because you can see there is a lot of accidents at that intersection and the overwhelming majority aren't even during the school in-and-out times. But you start adding all that, where you're having to concentrate on so many different maneuvers and so many different things, whether it's with a student or a bus. And then another concern is with the buses that have to turn, go eastbound or somewhere else. Not only do they have to transition two lanes, but it actually turns out to be three or four, four lanes, I guess it is, got to get the turn lane, the first straight lane, second straight lane, and third straight lane, and actually, you might as well add five because then they got to get into the left-hand turn lane to make their turn. So it's just, it's not a good idea. And I don't know that I can say that VDOT is really, they've made some suggestions and then I know when the first one I saw it was a westbound exit only, but it was just a suggestion, but that's moving some student parking and entrances around, making some no left-hand. some, you know, left-hand turns out of school, uh, just a lot different than what's been proposed here lately. So, I, I cannot support this.
Chairman McLaughlin, I just wanted to, to follow up. Um, I checked the, the proffers here, um, and it does say that the, the applicant will diligently, diligently complete said construction subject to county and VDOT permitting and construction requirements. So, it does appear that, you know, they are going to be subject to, uh, the VDOT requirements. Um, and like I said, there, there is a, a clawback provision so that if, if, if they don't meet the standards, if they don't construct them as proffered, then it will revert back, um, to, to the prior proffers.
Okay, appreciate that. Does the applicant concur with that? Can I get a?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Charlie Payne, Law Firm, Herschel Flescher, represent the applicant, uh, that is correct, county attorney has, uh, stated to you what specifically in the proffers.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. To start with, I'm, I'm not opposed at all to finding solutions to the, uh, issues that they have at Riverbend. What I am opposed to is the fact that VDOT, unless there is a report, and I have not seen a report except the ones that came out in two thousand twelve, which is basically five school years, uh, ago, that, uh, opening Spotswood would actually help with the school issues. In my discussions with, uh, Mr. Nelson at VDOT, he was adamant that they did not look at the effects that doing that would have on Route Three. And if they are telling other board members that that is so, then where is the report? How am I supposed to make a decision based upon hearsay and wishes? And the only reports that we have in front of us from VDOT are five years old, I'm sorry, four years old, and, well, one of them is basically five years old. And they deal with simply moving the school traffic around and not the impacts that it has on the rest of the transportation network. That is my concern. The, the student safety obviously is paramount, but in addition to that, we need to make sure that when we do things like this, this is taxpayer dollars. These are proffers that will be used to the tune of four to five hundred thousand dollars. So, this is, this has nothing to do with the applicant. The applicant was, um, told that this was something that the county wanted, or at least some people in the county had wanted it. They moved forward in good faith in, in that direction. And so, my, um, concern is not directed at them whatsoever, but at the fact that we're rushing into this without a report, without a study, without any way to verify that this is actually going to suffice. And yet, we're supposed to vote on this. Why not take a little bit of time, ask VDOT as I did, asked, I asked, uh, Mr. Nelson if they would be willing to take a look, and give a report and let us know that this actually will work? And if it will, I wholeheartedly support it. I have no problem with that. But there is nothing in front of us that says that it will, and, and to add to that too, this board just a couple of months ago, uh, supported the, uh, Route Three plan that VDOT has put together, basically from Harrison Crossing all the way out to the, uh, Route Twenty line. This doesn't exist in that plan. And yet, so here we are, we have a plan, we're deciding on how to move forward to get traffic moving, and we're already violating the, the plan that we have already passed. Uh, I can't support it for that reason. If we were to slow down and have VDOT, uh, take a look and come back with a, with a comprehensive report on that area, how this will impact, um, I would be fine with doing that, but at this time, there's just not enough information for me to make a, uh, educated vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
I noticed Mr. Nelson is conveniently not here, so he, maybe he's smarter than, than I think. Actually, he's pretty smart. So, I have sat down, excuse me, with Dr. Wright and Sean Nelson in Dr. Wright's office to go over that old report, and Mr. Nelson has assured me that nothing over the four years that's been done would change if they were to redo it again. I don't know if that helps you or not, Chris. Just wanted to throw that in there.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ross. No, what I'm saying, I'm, I, these reports deal directly with the school flow and the traffic flow, and, and, and that I understand, but what I'm saying is then when it hits the through lanes of Route Three, what happens at that point? That's my concern. So, you know, I would, I would ask that if we could do it, to take a little bit of time and have VDOT just look at that and then see how to proceed, because I don't want to be in a situation where we, we go ahead and we do this, and a few years down the road, it turns out that we've made an even bigger mess. That's my biggest concern. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Make a motion to approve the Chancellorville Crossing LLC proffer amendment.
Do we have any comments? Okay, call a question. Can we hold on that vote, Mr.? Mr. Sibylle?
Yes, I, I agree with the comments that Mr. Yakubowski has. Uh, however, uh, I'm also concerned about, uh, work schedules, and I think that they are, uh, uh, not of equal concern, but of a concern. I back the public safety issues that, that have been discussed here. I have spoken with the sheriff's office and they concur with what is, uh, being proposed, and, uh, based on that fact, I will support this. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ross, the motion again? I think it's still good, but.
Motion to approve.
Okay, call a question.
Five yes with Mr. Yakubowski and Mr. Benton voting no.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we'll go back and pick up, uh, public comment. Nikki, is there anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, there's two people signed up. Alfred King followed by Mar, Martha Hutzel.
I'll run through the guidelines briefly for public presentations. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak, and each, each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from you to the board of supervisors. They are not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sheet, print clearly, come to the lectern when your name is called, clearly state your name, address, and voting district for our record, address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or on behalf of a group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks, and written comments are always welcome. So, the first speaker is Mr. King.
Alfred King, one-one-one-oh-two, Fawn Lake Parkway, Livingston District. I've been honored to be a member of the library board for, uh, two terms of four years. Uh, I'm term limited and will be, uh, resigning from the board in November. There may not be a full understanding by everybody as to how our regional library system works. Basically, Fredericksburg, Stafford, Westmoreland, and Spotsylvania have agreed to have a joint library. We pay for it jointly, we use it jointly. It happens that this library is one of the best libraries in the state and has been exceedingly well, uh, recommended on a national level. We should be proud of the library that we have. During the last eight years, the economy has not been as strong as we would have liked, but because of that, library usage actually increased. So, each year, we have had an increase in library usage. The other, the budget has increased slowly. There have not been a lot of salary increases for the staff, which is the major item of expense, other than the books that we buy. So, we have had a very conservative budget approach. However, the Spotsylvania has not contributed its share to the budget of the library system over the last couple of years. Stafford has, Fredericksburg has, Westmoreland has. The other library board members have been, have been willing to go along with this shortfall, but we're starting to get real serious pushback. And we've worked out a system which Martha Hutzel, our library director, will discuss, under which the arrears can be handled over a period of time. We are requesting a supplemental appropriation, which if granted, will allow library service in Spotsylvania to go on as planned. If the funds are not provided, there is likely to be a reduction in service to the citizens of Spotsylvania. And I would just point out that a couple of years ago, a similar thing did happen in Stafford, and Stafford's library hours were reduced at a time when Fredericksburg, Westmoreland, and Spotsylvania were not affected adversely. So, I don't wanna hold a gun to your head, but effectively, we either are going to have to get even with the amount that we owe, or there are gonna be some serious consequences. Thank you.
Martha Hutzel?
Thank you, Al. Good evening. My name is Martha Hutzel, and I am the library director of the Central Rapid Regional Library. I actually live in Fredericksburg, Virginia. It's eleven-oh-five Walker Drive in the city. Um, I'm also joined this evening besides Al, um, our library board chair, Catherine Miller, and our deputy director, Rebecca Purdy, are here with me. I first want to thank all of you for your support of the regional library system over all these years and for the current painting and renovations that you're doing at your two Spotsylvania branches, the Salem Church branch and the Snow branch. I hope you had a chance to read the letter that I sent you, um, about a week or so ago. If you don't, if you didn't receive it or didn't have a chance to read it, we do have copies here with us this evening if you, if you would like one. The library board has basically directed me to pursue the budget shortfall that we've experienced from Spotsylvania County. I would just like to make a little correction to what Al said. We're not asking for a supplemental amount. This was the original budget request, which we were shorted this year. I am asking you all to fully fund our budget calculation for FY seventeen, which equals the remainder of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's the total amount that we are asking for, for the rest of this year. This was a modest figure to bring Spotsylvania back in compliance with your contractual obligation over the next four years. It does not include salary increases for staff. Our staff have already been informed, they are not getting increases this year. It is about covering increased operational costs, preventing further erosion of the library's fund balance, and restoring regional balance. This has become particularly critical since we have been short-funded for the past eleven years. In order to meet our obligations, we have had to tap into our fund balance. It is in the best interest of the library system and the jurisdictions for us to stop using our fund balance to meet our operational budget. We understand that during the recession, everyone's budgets were tight, but in the last several years, as the economy has improved, the other jurisdictions have been able to significantly increase their funding to the library while Spotsylvania has not. This has led to a situation where Spotsylvania is no longer in compliance with your contractual obligation to the regional library system. The Central Rapid Regional Library is one of the most successful examples of regional partnership in our community. Your constituents deserve to continue receiving the same high level of service that all of the library's customers throughout the region enjoy. However, we cannot let this trend continue. In order to balance the library's budget in a manner that is fair to the other jurisdictions, we are faced with the necessary decision to cut hours and services at both Spotsylvania library branches if we do not receive the final one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Thank you very much for your time and for considering this matter as soon as possible. I do have a few more minutes, so if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. I have a few statistics here which you might find interesting. Forty percent, almost forty percent of total circulation of the entire library system is from Spotsylvania County, and that's actually something that you should be very proud of. The buildings do not sit empty. One-third of research questions were answered at Salem Church in Snow, and I think some of you are at, at Salem Church for regular meetings. It is wall-to-wall people there. Over eighty-two thousand local residents of all ages attended classes and events at Spotsylvania County branches. More than one hundred and eighty thousand community members attended meetings at Salem Church in Snow branches. Thirty-five percent of people visiting the library came to Salem Church in Snow, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I have staff who refuse to work at Salem Church because it is so busy, it isn't fair to them. Forty-seven percent of all local youth were served by library-school outreach. We do go out and visit the schools on a regular basis. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any other information from me or you have any questions from me.
This really isn't a question-answer period, so maybe if there's additional presentation in the future, you could get onto our board agenda.
It's a great library system. Thank you for your support.
Anywho, signed up to speak? Is there anybody that'd like to speak that did not sign up? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, next on your agenda is a period for board reports.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's two things I'd like to, uh, talk about right now, and that is the, I just want to reiterate that the people in, uh, of, living off Mine Road and Falcon Drive and driving through that area, you've seen some, uh, you've seen some construction going on there, and that is the improvement to both Falcon Drive, Mine Road intersection there. Basically, took out the median so we could have, uh, better turns, uh, so that you'll be seeing two left-hand turns, one straight through, and then also one right-hand turn, just make the, the, the traffic flow a little bit better. There will be new lights putting up there too, so, um, hopefully that'll be done, uh, within thirty days. It's moved faster than I thought already, so hopefully that'll all be done. The other thing that I wanted to bring out was this week, we saw the opening of the African-American History and Culture Museum down in DC. And it was brought to my attention that we have a, we have a very historical, we have John J. Wright, which is, is all about the African-American growing up in the schools and stuff of that nature. But one thing that we, we have here that really hasn't been utilized or we should try to, is that school that we have down by the Marshall Center, that one-room school down there. And there's quite a history, uh, behind that school, and I think if people would understand that that school was, was actually bought and brought here to that position, and it has quite a little bit of history in it, and it has a, a true history that we don't, we don't really take advantage of. And unfortunately, a lot of times, the school's open and it's when people are working and stuff of that nature. What I'm suggesting here is this board, um, reach out to the black community, African-American community, work with John J. Wright, and see how we could probably better display that history in our county, um, to, to make it really worthwhile. We're missing out on a lot of history as we saw what was done and opened in Washington, DC. I, I think we have our, our own here. So, I would make a suggestion with Mr. Taylor, county administrator, and with the approval board, let's see what we can do with, um, there were, there was a committee, I'm not sure if it's still, um, available, but what I'd like to do is get with John J. Wright, and let's, uh, be happy to sit down with him sometime, meet with him, and say, how do you see? Because that school is separate from John J. Wright. John J. Wright is, uh, is, is in a category of his own with its own history, and we'd like to, or I'd like to see it, uh, the potential of that go to its fullest here. So, if we could do that without objection from any board member, that's what I'm proposing. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
If you do set up that meeting, I'd like to attend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, I, uh, I would allow, I'd like to nominate Jan Massey to the Spotsia Agricultural Forestry District Advisory Committee. She's the wife of one of the owners for Morton's, being, Morton's BMW. They also own a large, large farm on two-oh-eight in Livingston District. And I'd also like to put out to any other agricultural producers. And I'd also like to put out to any other agricultural producers, forestry producers, if you're interested in being on this committee, we do have input as development encroaches on our agricultural lands, and also in establishing the agricultural districts. So if anybody's interested, I'd welcome you aboard.
Mr. Benton, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for Jan Massey to be on the Spotsylvania Agricultural Forestry District Advisory Committee.
Any comments, questions? Call a question.
That'll be it.
Mr. Trenton?
It's my understanding that the terms of the Public Safety Commission have expired. I would like to move for the reappointment of Ernest Bartosz to that commission. He has been a long-serving member on that commission and its predecessor, the Fram Commission, and so I move that appointment at this time.
Call a question?
Seven, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Ross?
So I appreciate the library coming out tonight, and I know that from my personal experience, going to the library is one of the best experiences I have and memories with my kids as they've gotten older, and I still enjoy going there, and they were right. That library is packed. Two weeks ago, we disbanded or sustained the EDTC. I know there's a fiscal year 17 budget for $250,000 in the EDTC, which seems to be, we don't know what we're going to do with it. And the fact is that our libraries, if you look at community and economic development, and what's good for Spotsylvania residents, and good feelings, and bringing economic development to the area, certainly cutting services to our residents is not an economic development opportunity. It's actually a disadvantage economically. So I'm going to make a motion that we move $130,000 from the EDTC funding and FY17 to the libraries as requested.
Do we have any comments or questions? Mr. Yakubowski?
Yeah, there's no such thing as EDTC funding.
Okay. Well, Mr. Taylor, can you tell me, I know that there was $250,000 to the EDA, they did go to the EDO fund, and $250,000 to the EDTC, is that all in the EDO fund?
Part of it is in the EDO fund, and part of it is in the budget for economic development. Neither is a line item in itself, but one is EDO, one is economic development.
Which would be more appropriate that was set aside for the EDTC specifically? That's what my motion will be, from that fund, so.
Understand. I would, I am blanking on that in the moment. I thought I saw Bonnie here earlier, but I do not see her now. Could I possibly bring that information back to the board in future? And I apologize, I just am blanking the moment on which.
Is it possible to make a motion that we would pull it out of that fund without actually identifying that fund? No? Okay. I'll table it.
Apologize, but I will bring that back.
If we could get that answered while we're still meeting, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I do.
Mr. Skinner?
You know, I would like to see that information first. Many times, we have had things, and, Mr. Chairman, you're big on this, that we don't have the information in front of us to make that. So if we're going to be consistent, I would like to see that information brought back to us, and really look at it, too. Okay? And I'd also like to know, you know, I agree with what you said, Mr. Ross. I mean, when people come here, they want to look at our schools, they want to look at what we have for public services, such as the libraries, and I'm all for funding the library. I'm sorry, you know, it's somewhat shameful that we are the only county that has not done this, but I think in the years, we, like you said, been depressed. We should have kept up with it, and I agree, we will keep up with it. But I'd also like us not only to look at those funds, but see where all the possibility of these funds could come from, what other categories we're on, rather than just taking it from the EDO or the economic development. So let's look at where we can grab some out of, maybe it's a little here and a little there, but yes, I think we need to fund it, and we will fund it, but let's make sure we're making the right choices to say, you know, are we hurting something by doing that where we weren't hurt as much in one area? Okay? Thank you.
Along with that, if we could actually get the library's budget back to us and see what was being short. So all of that information, we can have together for the next meeting and make the decision, if that's possible. Yes, sir. Mr. Sebula?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, there are two other vacancies left, and one of them, Mr. Chair, is your own, and I would like to nominate you for reappointment. I'll make that a motion.
Call a question?
And while I'm at it, my term is also expiring, so I would.
I'll do it later if you like.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. I have an applicant for the Agricultural District in Purchase of Development Rights Committee, Ms. Angela Chainer. Ms. Chainer is here this evening with her husband. You all have a resume near Box, and I am nominating Ms. Chainer for the, as a landowner engaged in agriculture or forestry. And that should fill that vacancy, so I'll make a motion for that appointment.
Any comments or questions?
Could you tell me a little bit more about this committee? I was not aware of it.
This is a, it's a state-required committee. It's the same one you appointed Mr. Benton to, and it's, they are responsible for looking at purchase of development rights. They meet quarterly, and that's basically the committee, just like all the other committees. So, no further questions?
Any other comments? Call a question.
And also, since Mr. King is still here, I would also like to thank him for his service on the library board. I know, as long as I've known him, he's been a member of that board, and he has served well. He's fought for their budgets over the years, and just to personally thank him. That's all I have.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. You know, I'll tell you, I was, I really wasn't going to say anything, but, you know, here it is once again. When I ran four years ago, and even before that, economic development, bringing jobs into our community, reducing the commute, which there in turn reduces traffic, all of those things are a priority for me. And back four years ago, there was an idea that I had had that was instituted before of the Economic Development and Tourism Committee that was successful in the first term, and then was gotten rid of and did not exist until this board reformed it, put board members on it. We had people from the community that serve on it. We have a representative from EDA. We have a school board member that is a representative. We had interactions with staff consistently, and the concern that we kept hearing was that we did not have enough funding to do what we needed to do with our economic development department. And that's not only just getting the jobs to come here. You know, that makes a nice splash when we get the big companies to move here. But what really makes it function in our business community is keeping the businesses that are here, keeping them happy, making sure that the rules and regulations that we implement are not burdensome, that they not only want to start here, they want to expand here, and they want to continue being here. And so, we went ahead, we had the committee, met once a month. People took a lot of their time and effort to not only come to the meetings, but also to do things such as, there was a booth for our sister city at the Stars and Stripes. And then a couple of weeks ago, this board decided, on a whim, which I thought we don't do, but apparently we do, to suspend that organization. One of the complaints that was heard was that there's too many acronyms out there, and it's too confusing. Another one was that the EDTC has a budget, and we heard it again tonight. The EDTC is, or was, a subcommittee of this board with board members and other interested parties to move ahead the agenda items so that we're not taking a lot of time at board meetings discussing those issues, like we do with transportation, public safety, finance, everything else. It's very telling, I think, that we have board members who don't even understand that there's no such thing as an EDTC bank account. There's no fund. It doesn't exist. Funding the library, admirable. Never heard it during budget season from the board, that that was a priority. Now it's a priority because we've got money sitting there. I don't think that we should go ahead and start stripping money out of different accounts simply because somebody stands up here and says that they're going to reduce the hours. Number one, the money that is in that account is one-time money. So you're digging a deeper hole for the future because the amount of money that you're going to need in years to come is going to be even more, and yet, your balance is going to be reduced. And then, lastly, I'd like to say, too, is that when this committee was disbanded, there was a meeting that was going to be held the next Tuesday, and one of the members said, "Well, why don't we just meet as individual citizens? We can still come together, we can still talk, we can still have these decisions, or these meetings, and come up with some decisions that we can move forward with." And so we did. And I will tell you, those people that are on that committee have put in time and effort of their own time, volunteers, and they will continue to do so. And I encourage anybody else out there, board members also, if you want to be involved, if you want to push forward our economic development program and tourism, to please be involved. It's now citizen-run and citizen-directed, but I intend to attend as many meetings as But I got to say that almost to a person on that committee, the way that that was done at 10 o'clock at night on a Tuesday night, unceremoniously, just thrown away, was not only disrespectful, I think that it was a bad decision. And again, seeing tonight that we don't even know where money is and what accounts, I think speaks volumes. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, just for the record, I did advocate for the libraries to get more funding this budget season. I was in the minority, but I got thanked for doing that from the libraries, and I did advocate for it. Second of all, for any board members that just received that invite, you really can't go because if Mr. Sebula and Mr. Yakubowski are both there, no other board member can attend. It'd be a violation of, Carl can tell me. And.
There's certain open meeting requirements that if three members of the board were to get together, they would have to advertise that as a public meeting.
Correct. Specifically, economic development in Spotsylvania County, I would assume.
Okay.
Chair?
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you for letting me in. I do want to say, I was privileged to attend a breakfast this morning, and at that breakfast was five supervisors from Stafford County, and they centered around economic development. Okay? And I will tell you, from what I took away from that, is that they are so organized on their economic development that you watch that they're centered down there, their industrial center down there. They're really going after agencies, trying to bring people out of DC to come down there. And I think what we have to do is, we're going to have any chance to challenge Stafford and challenge those people coming another 15 miles down the road to us, I think we really have to look at what, you know, how we do our economic development here. Where's our priorities? What are our objectives and stuff of this? And I was, I'll be honest, I was very impressed with Stafford, and I think we need to do some catching up with them as far as how they're, what they're planning to do, how they do it, and they've got quite a few economic development committees themselves, and this is what we need to have. And I think that's what, that this one committee that Mr. Yakubowski was talking, this necessarily wasn't to bring people in, but to keep people from leaving. And I think that's just as important as bringing people into this county, because if you, as a company, want to come in here, and they look at the record of how many companies are going to other localities, they may want to ask why, and stuff of that nature. So we have to be strong in that, and I would recommend that we, we might find some ways to communicate with Stafford exactly what their economic policies are and review them. And I think that's something, and what they do is they review their policies, their economic policies, every five years, because time changes, and policies need to change. And I don't think we do that. And I think that's one step we could start doing, is putting a timeframe on what our economic policies are, and whether they're hurting us or whether they're helping us, and try to do it, because we can always be better. I don't care how good we get, but we can always make the procedure, the friendliness of bringing people here, and the reputation of Spotsylvania, because we do have a good reputation for people coming here, working. There's less red tape. I think it's actually cheaper here, too. So I would recommend that we think about that, and we think about, you know, having volunteers to continue this committee, because I do think that was a quick rational decision, and, or irrational decision, I should say. And just please consider that again in the future, because there are some very talented people out there that give their time and have some great ideas. I think what the misunderstanding might have been last time, and that's what I took from it, is that they had 30, 40 ideas, but I heard that it was up to the county administrator and the economic developer, Mr. Tom Remora, to see which ones that were reasonable, would not impact any, you know, extra money, time, and stuff. So, you know, I would love to be able to have choices, 25 choices, and decide which one's good for this county than having none whatsoever. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Mr. Sebula to the Merch Management Commission. Any comments or questions? Call a question. Public Safety, Public Safety Commission.
Seven, yes.
One thing, I wanted to bring up something, too. You know, we're batting around economic development and all that. I just want to point a couple of things out here. The last couple of years, the regional alliance has really stepped up to the plate here and done a great job for the region, particularly Spotsylvania. And again, I'll throw that back out to them. I appreciate the work that they're doing, because just a few years ago, a number of us advocated for eliminating the FRA because it was useless. But they've done a great job since then, and I think they're going to continue to grow that. And with that, and I'm going to throw one out for Tom Remora, too, because I continually get emails from businesses and leads saying what a great job he's done for the county, and please thank him for that effort. So there are a number of economic development opportunities in the pipeline, and I think our team has done a great job. So before we get all political here and throw everybody into the bus, I just want to say, our team is doing a great job bringing leads into the county. It can always get better, but let's not forget, we've got a good team that's doing a great job. That's all I wanted to say on that one. And the last point I want to bring up, and whether we want to talk about it now, but or, well, so Fredericksburg and Stafford, and I think it's come up here, it talked about permit, gun permits and various things, about what should the fee be? And my point is not so much the fee, it's the fact that, this is the concealed carry permit, that it's a five-year permit. Why isn't it a lifetime permit? Even if it's a $50 fee, once you're awarded the permit and you've passed the legal limit, why can't it be a lifetime permit? Now, I understand that's a state-mandated length of term. So what I'm recommending, and if you'll accept the motion tonight, I would motion that we put a resolution to the state. that we put a resolution to the state saying that if you are granted a concealed permit, that it's a lifetime permit. Mr. Datschke?
Yeah, if I may, you know, probably in the next month or two, we'll be coming up with our legislative package of, you know, recommendations to the General Assembly. And I think it would be appropriate at that time to include that as part of our legislative package, rather than just making a standalone motion.
Well, let me ask that, does it carry the same weight?
It carries the same weight as...
An individual resolution to the state?
An individual motion, yes.
Is there any other comments from the board at all? Mr. Skinner?
Couple of questions I have, so, and this is something we've got to find out. So if I have a five-year permit, obviously that can be taken away if I violate one of the things. Okay, if I have a lifetime permit, it's taken away, is there a time that I can regain it? Things like that. I mean, everybody's going to make a mistake. With a five-year, I don't know if you lose it and then five years down the road, you can reapply. These are the type of things that I want to know, because would it make a difference if they took my lifetime concealed permit away, or five years? I mean, they're the same thing, but should someone be banned for life because they walked in unknowing, forgot that they had a gun in them, they walk into?
Well, the argument is, why do you even have a concealed carry permit? You know, that's a deeper question, but...
Okay. That's all, just those are the type of things I'd like to find out before we do a resolution on that, sir.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, thanks. I think that would be a great topic to bring up at our Regional Officials Dinner in October, and get the region behind it, and put that on our legislative agenda. One of the ideas was to have a regional legislative agenda, and see if they'll jump on board with that, too.
Yeah, that's a good opportunity. So any other comments, questions? Okay, good. Appreciate that. Okay, I think that's all the comments.
Thank you. Next item up is a presentation on the convenience center residency decals.
My name is Ben Love Day. I'm Deputy Director of Utilities and Public Works for Spotsylvania County. Today, we'll be addressing landfill residency verification. If you can get the floor computer, please. This is a joint presentation of the Department of Utilities and Public Works and the Treasurer's Office. Basically, what's going on is this is a response to public concern over non-resident users of the county's solid waste facilities. Basically, the recommendation of the public, when they have called and complained, is where is the decal? Where is the old vehicle identification that said you were a resident of Spotsylvania County? Tonight, we are seeking direction in terms of a course of action. Is the board interested in pursuing such a decal program? And what would that decal program look like? It is important for the board to remember, and the public to remember, that the decisions made tonight will need to be basically made in ordinance. So whatever we decide tonight, we'll have to go through the ordinance, public hearing, and everything else as we vet through a program. So just bear in mind, as we go through this presentation. All right, applicable county ordinances. Basically, you have two sections that apply. It's 1979, 19100. More or less, it says that the county code prohibits the use of county solid waste facilities by non-resident users. That's basically people outside of Spotsylvania County. That'd be residents of Culpeper, Orange, Louisa, Stafford, Fredericksburg, anything outside of the county boundaries. The code also prohibits the importation of waste from outside of the county. This is basically to prevent the thought of the large semis rolling down the road filled with trash from New York City, or Maryland, or wherever else, coming into the facilities. A brief overview of the county system. We have 13 convenience centers. Chancellor, as many of you know, receives the most traffic. It's pretty, actually, really impressive. You go down there and see the traffic flows through that facility. We have 2,000 vehicles per day on average. It peaks now probably around 3,200 cars on a week. Actually, during the economic crisis, when people really were trying to save money and come into the facility, we were seeing nearly 4,000 cars in peak at that facility, which was pushing the limits of it. Basically, across all those 13 convenience centers, we see about 4,000 vehicles per day. And if you run that out, it's 1.4 million vehicle trips per year to the facility. So we do see quite a bit of traffic through the county solid waste facilities. If you take that and kind of look at an estimated number of regular customers, that's what would be considered, you know, once a week, or once every two weeks. We estimate we probably have between 20,000 to 30,000 regular customers. That's not the people just coming in, you know, once a month, or once a quarter. That's the folks who really use that as their sole source of solid waste disposal. If we were to look at a decal system for those regular customers, we're going to figure we need at least 60,000 decals for the regular customer base, because that's based on the assumption that we would issue two personal vehicles' tags per user. If you have more vehicles than that, then obviously we need to work through the logistics of how we issue additional decals. So the big question is, is there a problem? Basically, what I want to go through in these next two slides is report to you the facts, and let you kind of go through those and ask questions if you have them on, basically, on what we're presenting. But Chancellor is most at risk for non-resident, regular users. That's pretty much just because of its location and services it renders, considering the city of Fredericksburg and Stafford, and just the location of it within where the businesses are located along that corridor. Traffic counts do remain steady across all the facilities, so we haven't seen a large increase in traffic counts here recently. It's pretty much stayed fairly steady across the board. The overall tonnages for the 13 convenience centers that we have has remained steady. Some other things that we need to be considered is the city of Fredericksburg has curbside collection, so we don't see a lot, or don't think, they probably have a lot of folks who are loading up their trash cans and bringing them into the Chancellor facility. Stafford, many of you who are commuters know, is fairly geographically distant in terms of if you're an everyday, regular user, it would take you some time to come in from Stafford into Chancellor to dump. Commercial use of Chancellor is something that we do notice, dumping of construction debris. The reason we bring this up is because there's really no way to verify construction debris, because construction debris is not your household trash. That's basically your, you know, drywall, or timber, or lumber, or whatever, as a result of a project. So there's really no way to process that in terms of where it's coming from. Now, looking at Chancellor Center's tonnage, basically, what we see is a trend that has been increasing over the fiscal years, between FY14 and FY16. FY14, we had around 17,300 tons total in FY14 coming out of Chancellor. Now we're at about 19,006, with that average being 18,008 over that three-year period. If you want to know kind of where our adjacent localities kind of fall into this, the R Board, which will go here shortly into their decal program, that program became effective March 2, 2015. So if we were going to see any impacts from that decal program that they have, we would see that in FY15, FY16 timeframe. Something that's important to remember here is that economy does have an impact on your total tonnage that you receive. Across the history of the landfill facilities in the county, as the economy goes up and down, you do see an impact based on how much people are consuming and producing in refuse. Out-of-county commercial use, this is kind of a different concept. We're looking at this as you're imagining, you know, the collection trucks going down the road, picking up your trash at your house, or the semis that go down the road, or 30-yard containers, roll-off container, roll-off trucks that go down the road. Livingston landfill is the only facility that we have that accepts those bulk loads. Those are, like I said, once again, those are loads from the collection trucks, roll-off semis. Staff does perform load inspections at the gate. Basically, we request an origin of the gate from the driver, and they, we confirm it based on the load ticket. Once it's through the gate, we do spot-check loads. We review the documents and the loads for addresses, and that's exactly like what it sounds like, is it'll dump out in the ground, and staff will actually go through it and see if there's any excess addresses from adjoining locality. Basically, what we see after doing these load inspections, there is some mixing of bulk loads from adjoining counties, but there's been no load of sufficient out-of-county addresses to really warrant a penalty. And the penalty basically boils down to is that we can ban you from use of the facility. So there's no legal penalty against us, basically saying you can't use us anymore. Some additional out-of-county commercial use considerations. When we think about the waste that we see in our inspections, the private collections in the area are non-contract. What basically means that most of our localities around us, the collection of that private hauler is open to the free market. They can route wherever they want to in terms of picking up that material, and then they can take it to any private facility if they choose to, or a public facility, based on the ordinances. We have talked to all the haulers in Spotsylvania County. They actually are permitted through us. They receive an annual inspection and pay a fee. All of those that we have talked to are making their best efforts to limit bulk loads that they collect to Spotsylvania. But they will admit the crossover is inevitable, just based on geographical transportation grids. You know, basically, you'd be, we have, especially out toward the lake, they may pick up a couple of houses in Louisa, and then come back into Spotsylvania. So you're going to see that regardless of how you look at the private collection efforts in surrounding counties. Once again, construction and demolition debris is the hardest to pinpoint. There's really no addresses or indicators of origin, so it's kind of, you know, if you're lucky enough to find something, you find it. If not, you pretty much don't know where it's coming from. You rely on the driver at that point, and also the load ticket for origin, to basically address where that comes from. Another thing we have to consider is also disposal of convenience, which basically means that folks who commute into Spotsylvania, or out, or engaged in business in Spotsylvania, may take their trash from their, you know, originating locality and toss it in the trash at the business, or vice versa. Some concepts of adjoining localities. It is important to note that Stafford and city of Fredericksburg, through the R Board, which has flow control, which flow control basically says that all waste collected in those localities must go to the R Board facility. They can't, they cannot choose to take it to Spotsylvania, they can't choose to take it to King George Waste Management Facility. And also, once again, city of Fredericksburg has curbside collection. Now, in terms of residence verification at our facilities, we've thrown around some concepts to try to think, what's the easiest way to do this? We looked at spot checking, but because of the traffic counts, it's problematic. And it is, when you think about your processing, you know, 3,200 cars a day, especially on a weekend at Chancellor, getting in that stream, and pulling people out and asking where they're from, once again, you're kind of going based on what their ethical, moral obligation is to tell you where they're from. But it really kind of messes up that entire traffic pattern and causes backup. So there's really no efficient form of verification we have right now. We've considered driver's licenses, but actually, right now, in the state of Virginia, the county residency is no longer on your driver's license, so there's no way to check that by simply asking for a driver's license. The vehicle registrations, they do have the county on them. The problem is they're time-consuming for residents to produce. Unless they really get in the pattern of knowing they have to have it, they're going to be digging through their glove box for some time, probably trying to find the correct one, the one that's most in date. Also, it's time-consuming for attendants to verify, which means basically, you know, they're going to have to pull the car aside, ask for it, wait for it, verify it, and then move on. And something to remember, you're always going to have those people who refuse to produce that information, because they feel it's a private information, and that we, as a county, certainly from the solid waste side, can't ask for that. So that's just something we'd have to kind of work through with our gate attendants as we process this program. Also, ZIP codes came up. But if you look at our ZIP code map, we actually share seven of our nine ZIP codes with adjoining localities. So that one kind of goes out the window as a good way of determining where you're from, because those overlap by quite a bit, not just some pockets of ZIP code crossover. Now, I mentioned earlier the R Board. The R Board, that many of you may already know, is the Rappahannock Regional Solid Waste Management Board, comprised of the city of Fredericksburg and Stafford County. They developed a decal program, mostly associated with their financial issues that they were having at the time, trying to offset some of the cost of their facilities. They made that effective March 2, 2015. Their customer price right now is $100 unlimited pass, which means you can use their facilities all you want, all year long, for $100. There's a $4 single-visit pass that you can choose to purchase, or a $30 10-visit coupon book, literally, that they have. We reached out to them to ask them, you know, how many stickers you guys have produced, and what's it costing you? They have issued approximately 5,000 stickers so far, and the cost of those decals has been about $3,600 just for materials, and they're taking staff time, about 26 hours a week, to verify and process those sales. Some considerations that we need to look at as we move forward, if we choose to move forward, on any type of residency verification, is going to be our impacts to small business users. We do see quite a few of those. You know, you've got to figure out what the registration of the vehicle is. Is it register of business or personal? You know, are you going to set a lab of waste volume if somebody's using their business pickup truck to dispose their household waste? And, you know, what's the difference between bringing five bags and 10 bags of trash? It's something that we have to really kind of think of how we process that. Stafford's answer to that was to not allow any vehicles with business advertisement, regardless of registration. Basically, if you come into Stafford County landfill facility, and you have anything on the side of your car in terms of, you know, printing t-shirts, or renovation business, or whatever, you cannot use the facility, even if you're trying to dump your personal trash. Also, we'd have to look at vehicles without decals. We do see quite a few of those around, basically looking at one-time users. Vacation renters out toward Lake Anna, non-residing property owners, those who have property in the county but live elsewhere. Work-provided vehicles, military families, we do see quite a few of that. Those families come through the county in terms of trying to show where their residency's from. And then rental vehicles also would need to be considered. County staff pulled together some options, if you will, in terms of what a decal might look like and what the cost might be. If the board so chose, they could use the county seal, the crossroads logo. We looked at two different options here. One is a Euro Oval, which is basically a sticker, bumper sticker, more or less, that would go on your vehicle. And that costs about 50 cents each. I figure that's probably about one year of life, because you're going to have the UV rays, and it'll deteriorate, just like a regular bumper sticker. And you'll actually have to fix it to the car, so it'll have to go on your windshield, your window, or your bumper, or some other part of your vehicle. We also looked at plastic hang tags. Those are basically parking permits that would hang from the rear of your windshield, or your rearview mirror. Those are more expensive. They're $1.80 each, but they do have a longer life. One, they're removable from the car, so that you don't have to worry about somebody... It has two things. And one, you know, you're not putting that on the vehicle if somebody's concerned about that, but also, it does open it up to switch out if they choose to leave the county, or have some reason that they're going to need to switch residential permits. That potentially, based on the material, you could get two to three years of life out of, so you could consider doing like a multi-year program if that was desired. This is a joint presentation, I, once again, from the Utilities and Public Works Department and Treasurer's Office. So we decided to look at two different implementation plans for you. First of all, we want to talk about the public works implementation option, and then Larry will take up with the Treasurer's Office implementation here shortly. If the public works department were to implement the program, we basically would be able to make decals available for mail or pickup at Chancellor and Livingston. That's the only two facilities, really, that we would have available for that, based on staffing. All the convenience centers wouldn't necessarily have the capacity to take the, to have the decals and check the registrations, and then process it. We would require vehicle registrations when they come in to receive those decals, and we'd basically issue one registration for one decal. The annual sticker, something to consider here is that it could not be placed on the front windshield. If we were to implement the program, that is due to state code, based on, the only thing that's allowed on the front windshield is your inspection sticker and/or a, basically, your tax sticker that will be issued from the Treasurer's Office. It would require one part-time secretary, based on what Stafford County is telling us. So we're estimating the cost of that's at least $22,000 with postage, if, you know, where to mail them all out. It really depends on how many we issue, $5,000 to $10,000. That number could, would probably go down as opposed to go up. To give you a rough idea of the program cost summary, the decal program, that's basically that Euro Oval, which would go on your car as a bumper sticker. You know, when you got down the nuts and bolts of it, the approximate cost of that's $1.67 per decal. That's basically all your man-hours associated with it, that's the cost of materials, and getting it out the gate to the consumer. The hang tag program, once again, because of the increased cost of the hang tags, that would increase to $2.87 per tag. So that's, once again, that's your all-in, that's including the rest of the staff, and materials, and everything else. So that's the outdoor price, or not the, that's the outdoor cost to the county at that time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pritchard, who will go over the Treasurer's Office. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pritchard, who will go over the Treasurer's Office.
Just to give you a little bit history of the decals in the county, what we had before and, and what we potentially could consider going forward. The decal process was actually discontinued in 2006. The decal program was discontinued as a cost-saving measure. And also not, it also helped the taxpayer that they weren't scraping that decal and putting another one on every year. Currently, the local registration fee is charged, the fee is charged per vehicle. The fee is based on the type of vehicle, you know, like pickup truck or business vehicle, taxable status and the DMV status. Fee is prorated automatically upon the taxation. So that, you know, the taxes had to be paid prior to getting the decal. Your taxes had to be current with the old system. If your taxes were not current, then the decal was not issued. And, and the decal was issued by the Treasurer's Office. They were not required on farm use vehicles or antique tags or antique vehicles. They were displayed on the windshield. They were to the right of the state inspection sticker. The annual renewal fee, we had a different color. We basically used the county seal, but we had a different color background that distinguished what year it was for. And they were mailed separately from the tax bill. We mailed them out like early March, so they would have them for that calendar year. But the taxes had to be paid for the prior year. There was no distinction between business and personal use. They were issued for each vehicle. We didn't have a way to distinguish which was residential, which was business. Decals for leased vehicles were mailed to the lease company, not to the owner. This was a request of the lease companies. They, they had part of this as being part of their fee for the, you know, for the leased vehicle. Tags transferable only upon paying a transfer fee and providing the old sticker. That's if they trade a vehicle or sell a vehicle. Refund available if vehicles are sold and decal was returned prior to October. And that also required an affidavit for loss to stolen decals. So when we issued one, that, that was a minor cost for reissuring. In order to re-implement the plan, we'd have to get with Information Services to verify that the old system could be reactivated. It's, it's been 10 years since we've actually used the system. Considerations, not all vehicles receive the decal. No way to issue only a limited number per household. Or no way to control if we issued by household. Again, we'd have to issue them per vehicle to have some type of control as, as to which household they were being mailed to. How to handle ownership changes. Rental vehicles will not issue decals to, to the lease company. And also to rental vehicles that you made on a day-to-day basis would not have a decal issued. Will decal be linked to taxes paid? We would need to make that decision. If not, the old system may not be, you know, may, may not be able to use the existing system. An estimated physical impact, it's similar to Public Works. The issue of 50,000 to 60,000 decals, we had an estimated cost of 42,000. This would include decals and postage. And, and again, staffing would be additional cost to this, which we figured would take additional part-time employee. Anyone else have, have questions or comments?
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, guys, for coming out and presenting this tonight. So, so I'm going back to slide five. Pull that up on the screen. So the first issue is, is there a problem? And again, I think the reason I asked for you guys to come is because I'm not so much concerned about Spotsylvania County residents using our landfill but enforcing our own ordinance that prohibits outside people from coming in and dumping here. And it, it related to the R Board decal program starting up in Stafford and Fredericksburg. So based off of this, you don't happen to have FY13 numbers for me? So, again, this, my concern probably is focusing around municipal tonnage. That would be where we would see, if we are seeing it, it'd be at Chancellor. And if we are seeing it, it would probably be there. Is that correct? Like Stafford and Fredericksburg coming and dumping in our landfill?
Yes, if you, if you had an issue with residential users, you know, you're going to be seeing that mostly popping up in your municipal solid waste. And we do have FY13 numbers. I apologize, we don't have those numbers tonight. But, you know, we actually have records that go back quite a distance, so we can get that information.
Was there, was there a big jump from, or do you have that on you at all?
No, sir, I do not.
And then looking at this with the R Board and you put up the prices, was the $100 unlimited use, was that for a year or was that like forever?
My understanding, that's a one-year pass.
A one-year pass.
They basically change the color every year or vice versa, basically.
Okay. And could you go back to slide five again? So, so, okay, that unlimited pass is for a year and they'd have to reissue that out. Going back to the tonnage slide. So it does look like our tonnage did pick up in the year that the R Board started their decal program. So the question I would have, I mean, let's say worst-case scenario, started in 15. It's gone up from 14, 570, you know, almost, almost to 16, 5, and I'm rounding. But what is the cost of the county for that? If that, if that, that would, to me, be the maximum cost. I'm sure it's not that much. But the delta between fiscal year 14 and 16, what's that cost to county?
That, that particular number, while it sounds like a large number, it really is pretty minuscule compared to the actual cost of hauling that material. So it really doesn't impact it, to be honest with you.
Could you, like, give a rough idea? Is it anywhere close to $40,000 or not even?
I would say it is way below $40,000.
So it sounds like we might not have a problem. Even if this is all associated with this, it's not a very big cost to the county. Would that be a fair assessment?
That is correct. And I believe that, you know, we, staff continues to monitor the situation and we try to look for traffic patterns. And, and gate attendants do their best to approach folks who they feel are questionable and engage them. So they do their, do their best there. But, you know, once again, you kind of take what people say on, on faith a little bit sometimes too when it's, you know, they say where they're coming from, so.
Well, one thing I did say, you know, you said about using zip codes and, and addresses. But I don't see any issue with asking them their address. And I don't know if any of our employees at the landfills have smartphones or if the county provides that where they could plug the address in and a map and it comes up pretty quick. And for most of us, especially those who've been in Spotsia for a while, we can easily recognize if it's in Spotsia or not from the dot on the map.
I think that what you would have there at the convenience centers, I think the, the best option would be for the, the gate attendants just to access the address. And most of them are longtime Spotsia residents, so they probably know where they're at.
They probably know, like, by street name.
Yeah, as opposed to pulling up an iPhone just based on, you know, the demographic that we have there as the gate attendants. I think the best thing to do is use their, their institutional knowledge of the county and, and find out where it's coming from.
I was surprised when you said about the privacy issue. Because I'm thinking if somebody's using the landfill, they shouldn't have any privacy issue with sharing their address or their registration. And if they do, then maybe, maybe they're hiding something.
It's surprising what you run into at the landfill facility.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is. The last question I have, if we were, so the decals that were 50 cents each, if it was issued by the Treasurer's Office, they could still go on the front window? Or would they, would that be a different kind of decal that would have to go in?
We could process the decals, but I guess you would want an application to go with that. So you'll have some.
Well, I guess the question I have is, I saw these costs, like, no way do I want to do it for $42,000 for saving less than $42,000. Let Stafford and Fredericksburg come. But my question is more of, if it's 50 cents a decal, putting that in with the tax bill, would that lower the cost to, close to being 50 cents to, for every, every personal property tax is paid on a vehicle in Spotsylvania County? If you put it in the tax bill, there's no mailing cost. I'm assuming that's most of the cost of that $42,000 figure.
The, the problem would be is getting it matched up and also inserted in with the tax bill.
So like a number on, is there a number on the decal?
Yes. That would be a number on the decal that, that would identify who it's going to. And then matching up with that account. It would be very difficult to.
That becomes labor-intensive.
To put that, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Skinner.
Couple of questions going back. If you go to the section, I think it was the first slide, please, section 19100. It says that commercial users are required to pay. So when do the commercial users pay? They don't pay as they go through. Is it an annual payment or do they measure it? Do they, how do they pay and what's it based on?
What the section 19100 is, is the use charges. And what that's aimed at is basically establish the tip fee for commercial users. So, you know, if you are basically operating the facility or operating a refuse business for profit or, or as general, you know, non-residential and residential means you have a house here and this is just basically the product of your weekly disposal habits, you have to pay for disposal of that. At Livingston, we actually charge a tip fee based on weight. The code also has provision for if scales or the tip rate, the tip floor is not available, that we can charge per basically quantity based on the size of the load, the, what vehicle it's coming in at or based on our estimated weight based on what that load is comprised of.
Okay, and am I correct, Ed, that we said that tip fee, we had to lower it because we were losing? Is, did, could you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, we, we actually lowered the tipping fee a few years ago to $19 a ton for municipal solid waste. Prior to that, we had a tiered system for the tipping fees. And the revenue that was being brought in at the old tiered rate amounted to about $50,000 a year. By lowering the tipping fee, a lot of the companies that were collecting in Spotsylvania were actually taking their trash down to Richmond for disposal. Because it was cheaper to run it down the road. So when we lowered the tipping fee to $19 a ton, that brought the trash that was being generated in Spotsylvania back to Spotsylvania. And our revenues were over 1.5, I believe, 1.8 million.
Yeah, they're actually approaching 2 mil, sorry, they're actually approaching, you know, $2 million annually for this hit fees.
So by lowering it, we made more money, basically. That's fine. Couple of things, the other thing is, you said something about some mixing, you know, they'll drive over to Louisa and they'll get a few addresses over there and come back and do it here. Well, why can't we ask these companies that go to Louisa to identify what addresses they go to and maybe charge a little extra for those addresses? I don't see, I don't think it's beneficial for Spotsylvania to pay for Louisa. I mean, I would like, I don't, I don't want it out of reach or put them out of business, but I don't think that we should be paying for Louisa's trash pickup.
The issue you run into there is, is basically if we, we can't pick and choose. If, if we were to do that, we'd have to pass an ordinance to do that. And I'm not sure of the legal ramifications of 100%, but I would imagine that if we were to establish that Louisa County waste could be brought in at a certain additional premium, that it wouldn't just apply to one company or one collection route. It would probably be to that entire locality. So that's just something we have to really look at because there are a lot of impacts, interstate commerce laws and everything else when you're dealing with that stuff. So you can't just be exclusive of saying it only from, you know, this road or this collection pattern or this company, so.
I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking for is that every company has a route. There's a truck that comes over to my route, picks up mine on certain days. And they have a route that they go and they do it on different days. We should be able to know what route they are and how much of it goes into Louisa. And I, I mean, are we saying it's okay and not monitor that? Because if, if interstate, whatever you want to call it, the, the laws say that we, it's okay to go out of one county and pick up their trash and bring it back to ours, I don't mind doing that as long as they're paying the just fees as our, our citizens are paying over here.
In that situation, I think what we would need to do, and I can look through our permitting rules, to actually ask for the copies of the routes. I think right now that when they get permitted in the county, I don't think that includes actually providing a copy of the routes. But that's something we can certainly investigate and find out, you know, can we just ask for it now? Or whether or not we need to go through some type of ordinance change. So we definitely will investigate that and see what we can, we can pull together.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, you mentioned military families on one slide, then rental vehicles and then vacation renters. Well, can't we have a specific? See, if I'm a renter and I'm renting my home down at Lake Anna or a rental cottage and everything, what I do in a rental down in Myrtle Beach is I make sure they have parking permits that I purchase for the renters. So why couldn't they, the vacation people who own those homes, purchase the, purchase the pass, whether it be hanging on their, their mirror or whatever, so they could be seen by the county and let them pay for it? And include that in part of the rent for the cottage, and the same way with the rental vehicles. I mean, if somebody wants to get a rental vehicle and, and load it up with trash and take it in there, then let them pay by the bag or something of that nature. I, you know, I don't think these, these, I don't think our citizens need to pay and then somebody's smart enough to go out and get a rental truck that says rental, whether he gets it for a lower price or what, and not pay for their garbage. So I'd like you to look into something like that, that, you know, just like the rental vehicles. Let them give you, if that's what your purpose is to rent that vehicle, then better make sure that the rental company gives you a pass in our county to take it to dumpsters. That's what I would suggest on that one. Okay? The other thing is, this for Larry. Larry, you said that in the old time, you used to send things out in March for the next calendar year? Or for that calendar year? Because, you know, calendar years start in January and you mentioned the words. I may misunderstood what you meant by that and I'd like you to explain that again, please.
I probably misspoke. The decals, when they were initially mailed out, were mailed out at the very beginning of the first of the year. And it was based on the prior year taxes. So if I said March, I misspoke. I should have said it was, it was done very first of the year, end of December.
Okay, thank you very much on that one. So, and, and, you know, being former military and we have military here, I, I, you know, I understand that. But if they're, if, this is on a yearly basis, correct, that we would be doing these decals? It'd be renewed every year?
Yes, that would be the, it depends on what the board decides to do. But yes, if, if we were to recommend something, it would be an annual pass if we were to make a recommendation.
I think if, if, when we move here, a lot of people go on three-year tours, maybe two-year tours, but stuff of this nature. I would think that it'd be very easy to do this as a military family. If you're going to live here for a year, you should go ahead and pay what the other citizens are paying for here. Now, I know that they may get orders to move during the year. And then all they would have to do is take those orders back to the county and say, look, we, we would like to get a rebate on what we didn't use or something of that nature. I know how difficult that would be, Larry, but, you know, I'm not, I'm just thinking that that's something we could look into. Or if they knew they were leaving in January, just ask, if they were leaving in June, just ask for the permit through that. And couldn't we prorate it through that, to those months? With, you know, you're going to have documentation too in front of you to prove that they're leaving.
That's something we could do. I mean, even with the local license fee, that's prorated the same as the vehicle is when the taxes are, are applied. But the refund process would be very cumbersome. It would take a lot of time to, to refund something that may only be $5, $10 back to the individual. So it, it could get expensive and time-consuming.
Now, what you showed during the year, the cost to our county to do these decals, we have any way, you know, we could be pretty sure of how many decals we would have to be putting out, correct? Have we figured out at the cost it would cost us, how much we would charge each citizen for a decal to cover our cost?
I came up with the total cost. The cost per decal would be very close to what Ben came up with. And I think one was a dollar, about a $1.67?
Yeah, we looked at the program based on just what it would cost the county. We were kind of looking for direction from the board if we were to decide that we're going to charge for these decals, if we're going to do them, or whether or not we just basically issue them as, you know, basically a issue to the residents as part of their existing tax base. So it really kind of, it's, it's up to the board how they choose. If, if they choose to do a program like this, if we decide to actually charge for it or recover cost or if we're actually going to, you know, increase above the cost recovery fee, so.
Personally, I don't think $1.50, $1.56 is something that the citizens wouldn't want to pay to have a good garbage disposal area like we do at Chancellor and Livingston and stuff of this nature. And it would certainly save some money on our part. And it would certainly save some money on our part for the county that we could put into other certain things, that's libraries or something of that nature. So, now, if it was outrageous, you know, $50 or something like that, but a dollar 50, I don't think would, would hurt. I mean, so that's just a recommendation I have on that one. And, do you, can you, you just mentioned something I didn't know. I checked my license. When did the DMV stop putting addresses on it? Because that's one form of ID and they always ask me, "Is this where you still live?"
I am not sure, to be honest with you. I didn't know they'd taken it off until somebody mentioned to me, "Oh, so can we just check the driver's license?" And they're like, "Well, it's not on there anymore." And I looked on mine and it's not on there. So, I'm not sure when that actually changed.
Because I got mine in 2013 renewed for five years and it's still got my address on it, so I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, they, it has the address, it just doesn't have the county of residence. It used to say in a portion of the driver's license, said actual county, like, you know, Orange County or Culver County or Spotsylvania County, but had that county in there.
Oh, okay. So, it doesn't make, your address is still there, your home address?
That's correct.
Okay, now I know what your point was, okay.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Mrs. Bulon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We discontinued this decal program in 2006 and, and your bullet says discontinued as a cost savings measure. What has changed from then to now that we're even considering this process?
I mean, pretty much what, as I started off the presentation tonight, this was brought before the board, just based on some feedback we've had from the public using our facilities. And we just wanted to bring it to your attention and see if this was something you wanted to investigate further or not.
Yeah, well, I, you, based on the figures that you presented in here, my calculation was there were about 300 vehicle trips per day for the, other than the Chancellor facility. That's a lot of vehicles per day, but we've got a full-time person at those sites. I have queried three of those employees at three different sites and asked them if there was a problem. This is in the rural area, it's not up at Chancellor, and there is no problem. They know all of the people that come in and out by sight, basically. They know the vehicles. If somebody's strange, they'll question them. If it's, if it's something that's trash, that's business trash or renovation trash, they'll question them. Other than that, it's not a problem. I don't, I don't see where we are going with this. To me, it's a, unless we're going to make big bucks out of issuing decals, the trash that's going in the landfill is being sold, we're charging $19 a ton for the commercial users, I, I, I just, I, I think this is just a waste of time and money and, and effort. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
So, there, clearly half of the traffic we have goes to the Chancellor, so if there's a problem there, it's a problem for the county. And I agree with Mr. Sebula, I'm sure it's not a problem in his area, so.
So?
But for the rest of us, but really quick, if you were to not have the requirement to put a, to match a decal number and just put the decal in the December tax bill, would that lower your cost to, to be just the cost of the decal? Larry?
It would lower the cost, but still the manual intensive of, of matching it up and getting it in there. If you take away that decal number, you go lose your internal control as to who you issued it to and that might.
Right, I get it. I mean, our whole intent is to make this just so Spotsy residents are, are using it, but from what you've based out, there might be a little bit of a problem here, but it sounds like overall it's not worth trying to fix or, or in any way the cost isn't, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. It's going to cost more for us to enforce our ordinance across the board with everybody, especially at the Chancellor, than to just let it continue to go. And I'm sure other, I'm sure people from Stafford and Fredericksburg are using it, but it looks like not to the extent that some, some action by this board needs to be taken.
Mr. Trampi.
Larry, if we were to bring back the old system, would it be possible to make it voluntary where only those who use the convenience center would purchase the decals?
I'd, I'd have to check with information services because currently it's set up and it would issue a decal for all vehicles, whether taxes were paid. If that household had a past due tax, it would not issue the first decal, so they wouldn't get anything to, to use the landfill. So, I, I just, I don't see it really, the system being able to handle without some major changes and, and seeing if it could be implemented back.
If we were going to do this, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of, a lot of interest on the part of the board, but if we were going to do it, I, I think the Public Works implementation would be easier.
Mr. Jakobowski.
Thank you. You said we had complaints. How many complaints have we had?
I'd probably say, you know, a half dozen to a dozen complaints.
Okay, so.
Throughout the last couple of years. So, it just, you know, we have folks that come in who just wanted to express that and we wanted to bring that to your attention, so.
Right, well, and, and it's their right to do that now, but I'm, I'm just a little perplexed that you guys spent all this time, energy, effort, sat in this meeting. We've been going on about this for quite a while now, over six complaints and a potential of somebody from a neighboring county coming in and dumping trash with, when there's really no evidence. So, you know, it's not like there's a obvious problem that we're trying to fix because all that this would do if we went down any of these scenarios is going to punish people who live here for those one or two or 10 or whatever the number is of, of violators. I, I looked at Google Maps just to see because Fredericksburg has curbside pickup, so who's going to put their trash in their car when you have it available to you? So, I Google mapped it just to see, so I went to Southern Stafford over by Falmouth, figuring you hop on 95, come down, go Route 3 and head over to Chancellor, which is the easiest possibility. You're not going to come from Chatham or, you know, or Orange or something. And right now, as it sits, it would take 17 minutes one way. So, you're talking about, say, 20 minutes with round numbers. You've got 40 minutes, drop off your trash. Really? I mean, the, yeah, gas, time, energy, effort to avoid it, sure, there are some people out there that might do that, but it's not impacting us whatsoever. And, and I would say unless we see a spike and unless we see some type of trend, then that is when this, this should come up. I'm, I'm just surprised that we had six or 12 complaints and, you know, now you guys do this long presentation that's, that's very good and very informational, but it just, it's unnecessary in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Hey, I just thank you for, guys for coming out. Clearly, if there was, I, I, and you can see on Slide 5, there is a spike, right? It does go up. If that fiscal year 16 number would have been 30,000, we'd be concerned, right? So, I, I appreciate, I don't think it's a waste of time at all. I appreciate what you guys have done. And I can say for, for a fact, when I used to live in South Stafford County, on my way to work is when I would go to the Stafford County landfill and drop my things off. I know many residents in Stafford and Fredericksburg work in Spotsy. They very easily on their way to work or their way home from work could stop at one of our convenience centers. And I'm sure that happens, I'm sure it has, but it looks like it's not happening to that, that extent. But I think it was worth looking at. I thank you for doing that. Can never be, you know, it's a good, good brief that you guys gave and I'm very thankful. Thank you.
All right, so, I use the Chancellor site all the time. It's a great facility, it's run well. I don't think there's a problem, and I don't think any of you gentlemen think there's a problem either. And I don't think we need implementing more burdensome regulations on the taxpayers. So, based on what I'm hearing right now, unless somebody wants to motion to institute this penalty, I say we're over. We don't need to do anything. Mr. Sebula.
One final comment. One thing I, I know, living in a rural area, any, any burden that we put upon our citizenry that will take them away from going to the convenience center is going to put the trash on the side of the road. And that's the last thing that I want to see in this county. Thank you.
Are you motioning to approve? I kind of would like to move this on. If you're not going to, if you really want to speak. All right, so, seeing none, and I don't think anybody's motioning to adopt this process, let's move on. Thank you for the help.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, we have several items for closed meeting and the county attorney will cover that resolution.
This is your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of, of the public body, specifically the position of county attorney. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Wee Hill District. And whereas Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically relating to a food processing business, a machine manufacturing business, retail support products manufacturing business, and a defense contractor. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with leading legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, specifically Henderson Construction Company, Inc. v. Board of County Supervisors, case number CL 16-780. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code annotated Section 2.2, 3711A, 1, 8, 3, 8, 5, and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the after-stated matters.
No motion?
Some move.
Call a question.
Seven, yes.
County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Trampi.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Sebula.
Aye.
Mr. Jakobowski.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
All right, Mr. Chair, the, the first item I have before you is a settlement agreement and mutual release in the matter of Henderson Construction, the Board of Supervisors, County of Spotsylvania, Virginia. This is a full settlement and mutual release, the terms of which require the county to pay $1,950,000 as agreed. This represents a savings, of course, of the $4.4 million claimed. Staff has evaluated the settlement agreement and can recommend it to the board as a fair settlement.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments or questions? Call a question.
Seven, yes.
Mr. Chairman, in connection with the agreement just voted, staff has circulated recommended budget adjustment and appropriation for payment of such funds, and we had asked the board to consider a motion to approve the budget adjustment and appropriations for payment of Route 3 widening project settlement as detailed in the material circulated and discussed in closed meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any comments or questions? Call a question.
Seven, yes.
Add another closed meeting item, Mr. Chairman, and that is entertainment of a motion to appoint Carl Holston as your new county attorney and to approve contract on terms as discussed in closed meeting.
Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Call a question.
Six, yes, with Mr. Ross voting no.
It takes, Mr. Chairman, to the new business item on the High Speed Rail Regional Process Joint Letter is under Tab F. in your agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, this letter was, was drafted by Hanover County, who has concerns about the, the High Speed Rail project, and they've requested that area localities sign on to the letter, you know, thinking that it may carry more weight if, if multiple localities sign on to it and it's in your, your, the draft letter is in your book there. It does not oppose the High Speed Rail project. What it does is take issue with the process that DRPT has used. It asks, and it's going over DRPT's head to the Secretary of Transportation, asking for intervention to slow down the process and provide more opportunities for public comment and to also take local inputs from local governing bodies and make sure that they are given the appropriate weight as far as the moving forward with the project and also any potential routes for the project.
Any discussion? Mrs. Bulon.
As the district in which the majority of the affected people in Spotsylvania County were located, I would motion to approve.
Any other comment, questions? Has anybody else signed it? Any other jurisdictions?
I understand three localities have signed it and they would like to get at least three more to sign on to it.
Mr. Benton.
Who else has signed it? Has any of the ones, and this is in addition to our own resolution to, to DRPT?
I don't have, well, our resolution opposed the, the eastern bypass, so it's, it's, it, it doesn't talk about opposing routes or anything like that. It just says that DRPT needs to slow down and provide more information to the public and provide more opportunity for the, the public and comment, to comment and influence the process. So, I, I understand, I don't have the list of who's signed on. I believe Hanover County and Ashland have signed on and possibly Caroline County, but I'm not sure about that. But, but anyways, they've asked us, Stafford and Fredericksburg to also sign on to the letter.
Any other comments, questions? You did motion, correct? Okay, call a question.
Seven, yes.
One more item, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I apologize, it's not on your agenda. You might recall that as originally released, the agenda for this evening included a public hearing concerning budget adjustments relating to the 2016, the, the bonds sold this summer and the appropriations for projects to be undertaken in this fiscal year, including school technology, bus replacements, computer aided dispatch elements. school technology, bus replacements, computer aided dispatch elements, the, et cetera. The point is that there was an error in the advertisement in the Freelance Star that had to be re-advertised, correction at no cost to the county, but I need your authorization, please, by a motion and vote, to authorize a public hearing to be held on October eleventh, 2016, to receive comment on the FY 2017 budget adjustments that will be necessary to deal with the proceeds from the issuance of bonds this summer, 2016.
You have a motion?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Any comments, questions? Call a question.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes your agenda for this evening.
Anything else? Any comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Call a question.
All right, you two.
So this raises an interesting question.
Tim.